I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call to order the emergency meeting of the Board of Trustees on Thursday.
April fourteenth.
April fourteenth at twelve oh eight P M. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Brucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
The emergency meeting called today, I'm gonna get a different mic this one. Okay, the emergency meeting we called today is to discuss resurfacing, repaving of roads. We have to have a decision made if we want to proceed to the Butler County Engineers Office by tomorrow afternoon, which warranted the emergency meeting. We got an estimate for repaving, resurfacing a race lane from Alert New London to, is it Howard Road?
Howard Road.
Howard Road. And Butler County Engineers estimate was two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And when they put it out for bid, J R Jurgensen's estimate came back at two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. So at our Board of Trustee meeting on Monday, April eleventh, we asked that we contact Greg Wilkins and see if we could get any update on the block grant that we applied for, for repaving Race Lane. And also to see if we could get a price on resurfacing Morgan Ross Road from the Ross Township line, which is the address was twenty-nine oh?
Twenty-nine hundred.
Twenty-nine hundred to Leahy, which is Morgan Township's responsibility for Morgan Ross Road, maintenance. And so I did, after our meeting on Monday, I called Greg Wilkins, talked to him about the things that we discussed at the meeting. And he said that the block grant was turned over quite a while ago to the county commissioners. And there has been no decision made on that as of yet, but he would call, contact the county commissioners and see if he could get an update on that. And we also contacted, Greg got with Eric Ziegler. And Eric first gave a preliminary estimate based on the formula that was used to calculate from J R Jurgensen to bid for Race Lane. He used the same equation for the Morgan Ross Road. And he came up with an estimate of two hundred and fifty-six thousand seventy-five dollars, which you'll see on, on one of your sheets. But that was not, that was subject to Jurgensen approving that. So Eric contacted.
Tim Beatty.
Tim Beatty from Jurgensen. And Tim went back and recalculated based on, he said, there's a little bit, it's a little less mileage, but there's a little more work, more traffic, so it would involve more traffic control. And there's also a stop, stop.
Two words.
Two words.
Two words that just say stop at the intersection of Leahy and Morgan Ross.
And that would be an additional, so the, the estimate that Eric put together using the same formula for Race Lane of two hundred and fifty-six thousand seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents, Tim said it would be an additional two thousand dollars. So their estimate for Race, for Morgan Ross Road from Leahy to the twenty-nine hundred block would be two hundred and fifty-eight thousand seventy-five dollars and forty-one cents. As far as an update, Greg called me yesterday. He talked with the county commissioners and they have not made a decision as of yet. And he said, I don't want to get your hopes up. That doesn't mean we're, we are in the running or anything like that. And he said, just typically, he said, now, not, not saying either way, I'm not trying to sway you or anything, but he said typically, they don't do resurfacing or repaving projects using block grant money. But he said, there's always, always a chance. So that's the update that I have. So we have two estimates on the table now to do either Race Lane or Morgan Ross. Or we do one of them, both of them, or none of them. That's the kind of the decision we have to make and give a deep estimate, or give the, our answer to the county engineers office tomorrow.
I actually have a little bit to add to that.
Okay.
I got with Eric Ziegler just about an hour ago and we kind of sharpened the pencils a little bit. On the original estimate of the two fifty-six seventy-five, if you see center line and edge line, he only had center line marked on there, didn't have the edge line marked on there. So I said, we need to have the edge line, so they had to add the edge line to it. But he had bid it with what they call thermoplastic, which is a whole lot more expensive. And the thermoplastic also will last a lot longer. So I had him recalculate that instead of using thermoplastic to disuse regular paint and glass beads, which took the price from fifty-one hundred dollars a lane mile for the center line down to two thousand dollars. And then the same for the edge line from twenty-seven hundred to a thousand for the, the white paint. With that being said, that with them adding the edge lines, but reducing from the thermoplastic to the white paint for the center line and edge line, that puts the, the new price at two fifty-six, three sixty-one, and that's including the two thousand dollars additional for traffic control and putting the wording at the intersection and all that that he had put with the original thing from Tim Beatty.
That includes his two thousand dollar.
That includes his two thousand dollar.
And that was two fifty-six, three?
Two fifty-six, three sixty-one, thirty-three.
Okay.
So that, two fifty-six, three sixty-one, well, is that the number you had?
Yes. For, for Morgan Ross Road to do everything like as before, for the exception, instead of doing the thermoplastic, which is the, it, it's a better product, but it also costs a whole lot more. So we went from the best to just average, standard stuff is what they call it, which is just paint, just regular paint with glass bead sprayed in it. So it, it's about, let's see, it was normally fifty-one hundred and now it was two thousand. So that's the, the savings that we're getting there.
Okay.
And that's for the center line and the edge line?
Right, well, the, the edge lines are only a thousand dollars per unit. So that'd be, that's where it comes up there. So it doesn't have the total for what it is for, but there's two point nine-two miles of edge line and there's one point four-six miles of center line.
So did he do the same thing on Race Lane, but the more expensive?
Well, he did not recalculate.
But I mean, he did do that, so there is, there will be a savings if we were to do Race Lane and go with the standard paint.
Correct. There would be a savings on that because he, he estimated that at thermoplastic also. And I said, we, we, we want to eliminate that because we're trying to stretch it as far as we can to get as much as we can. So instead of doing that, and we, we always, every two years, we re, restripe the roads anyway, just for better reflectivity and stuff, so.
It would probably be about the same savings because it's not that much difference in the mileage.
Correct.
So it'd probably be about the same, I mean, if, you know, you want to just calculate it in your mind.
Okay. Might be more savings though, because they, they already have the twenty-seven hundred dollars in for the edge line on Race Lane, correct?
Yeah, but.
We didn't have any, any same figure.
His new cost is with both.
Right, and, and then instead of.
You would get that twenty-seven hundred dollars back because we had, we didn't have that twenty-seven hundred dollars in. We had nothing for edge lines on the Morgan Ross Road, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, Rob, have you looked, does, from seven forty-eight to Leahy, that part of Morgan Ross Road, it doesn't seem like it's war as much as the other end has. I'm, I'm, I don't know, you think that's true or not? You think it's?
What's not war as much?
The, the road, the, the, the traffic, as far as the traffic was on it.
Oh, you get out and walk the road and you'll see that it is war. It is war really good. Driving in a car, you can't see it, but you, you walk it and it's, it's war pretty bad. And there's some alligatoring, what we call it, where it's just really cracked up real bad and stuff. And it's, it's a lot worse than what you think it is when you get out and walk it. Now, driving in a, in a vehicle, you don't see it, but you get out and walk it, you can see it a lot better. You can see the imperfections where they're going to have to do pavement repair and stuff. And that's all included in the, the price there of fixing all that.
Repairing?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I was just thinking, the traffic might only come, as it comes up, Cincinnati-Brookville, they turn right and go down towards Hamilton, you know, and bypass that section. But apparently not, apparently they, you know, like you said, a lot of it goes on to Leahy.
There's still a lot of traffic because you still have, there's people that, that come across Robinson, Leahy, and then turn left on Morgan Ross, going down to, to seventy-four and Miami Town and stuff.
Yeah.
There's, there is a lot that, that only goes to seven forty-eight, that comes down seven forty-eight, turns left on Morgan Ross.
Yeah.
But there is a whole bunch that comes Leahy, turns and goes south. And then we seem to be getting even more traffic coming off of one twenty-nine, coming south on Morgan Ross.
All the way down Morgan Ross?
All the way down Morgan Ross.
When's the last time we did that? Was it, or it just held up better? It was all done at once, or?
No, that, that was the last done. And it's just, it's held up a lot better.
And it wasn't the black mat though?
Oh, no, that up there, that was, the last time that was done, they, they did the, I'd have to go back through my, my thing there, and I could probably get that, but it's, it's been a while, but it's just, it's held up very well up there, so. And I, that's not even in the, the radar for doing anything in the next couple of years, so.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think we'd probably still, before we do anything north of Leahy Road on Morgan Ross, we're still five to eight years before we do anything up there.
That's between Leahy and one twenty-nine?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that, that's still holding up very, very well up there, so.
Yeah, our mistake was using that black mat all along.
Yeah. If we would have black topped that the last time, instead of using black mat, we wouldn't be doing anything with it right now, I don't think so.
Yeah.
So is that part of the reason?
But that's been ten years ago that we did that, so. That was like either twenty-twelve or twenty-thirteen when we did that, so.
Because we had such a problem on the hill there.
Right.
Remember? It slid off the hill and, yeah, so that, that road's still chunked up right there.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, I was just, yeah, I was seeing if that, that was a necessary, but it's too late to cut it anyway, but.
So what, did you have a chance to look at your traffic counts to see which road gets more traffic?
No, I did not get to that, but I could get that real quick here. I was just trying to see when. Yeah, in two thousand and eleven is when we did that black mat from seven forty-eight south of the Ross Township line, so we didn't even do anything in between seven forty-eight and Leahy in two thousand and eleven. And in two thousand and twelve, that's the last time Race Lane had anything done to it. And that was that fiber mat, which is basically is just a single layer of chip seal, is all that Race Lane got. That was in two thousand and twelve. So that's taken us ten years, and that's about the, the life of, of chip seal and those ten years on chip seal. You're supposed to get about twenty out of, out of pavement. I'm trying to go back to find. In two thousand and two, Morgan Ross Road from the maintenance line. Two thousand and two was the last time that, that lower part of Morgan Ross from the maintenance line to Leahy got an inch and a half surface in two thousand and two.
What, what'd we put on it?
Inch and a half.
Inch and a half.
That was in two thousand and two. And in nineteen ninety-three, from seven forty-eight to Fenton, they put an inch and a half level and an inch and a half of finish on Morgan Ross. On the north side of Leahy, that's the last time anything was done on Morgan Ross Road. It was nineteen ninety-three, so we're almost twenty years and it's still holding up very well.
Wow, that's.
And then what was the chip seal year on Race Lane?
Two thousand and two? Didn't you say two thousand and two?
Two thousand and two.
Probably not that much traffic though.
And then the last time Race Lane was paved was nineteen ninety-five. And that was an inch and a quarter surface is all that it got in ninety-five.
I mean, I would, I would have to think Race Lane gets used a lot more than Morgan Ross, especially with, with the heavier trucks. I know you can't do a vehicle count, but.
I don't have the vehicle count saved on my computer, but I was thinking I could go to the county's website and get that.
How often do they do that? The vehicle count? It's where they put that little strip on the road and?
I think every two years they do that.
Okay. Well, just an update, I went back and looked at what we have available for the A R P money. We have from our first draw available is a hundred and eighty-eight thousand and there's like three hundred and some dollars, but just say a hundred and eighty-eight for simplicity's sake.
That's left, that's what's in the book right now.
Of the hundred and, or three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred, whatever we got. We got the first, three hundred and six, and then another twelve hundred, I believe it was, wasn't it? Something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the three hundred and six that, and there's, it's, it's again, a little more than that, but for simplicity's sake, three hundred and six thousand. So that gives us a total of four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that we have available for A R P money left, that's.
Including the, including the May deposit?
With the May deposit, yes.
Okay, so total is four hundred K basically?
Four ninety-four.
Four ninety-four?
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
And that's if, if we would, then you would have to be taking these road pavements out of that, out of that four ninety.
We couldn't do the whole thing. If we did both of them, both of these combined is five twenty-two, seven forty-five.
Well, let me.
We don't have, we don't have enough to do it all out of A R P money, but we do have.
If we didn't have the A R P money, what would we do?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't pave.
We have no, we would have no funds in the, in the general budget, no funds in the road and bridges department. We would have, there's nothing there that would be able to do this, right? Am I thinking that right?
That's kind of where we've been for the last, what, Rob?
Seven years, eight years?
I was gonna say eight years.
Okay.
But before, before the budgets got cut, we, we touched on this a little bit Monday night, before Governor Kasich redid his, balanced his budget basically and cut, we used to do three miles of road every year, so, and it was approximately thirty miles of road. So every ten years, every road was addressed in some way, whether it be repaving, chip seal, something, correct, Rob?
Correct.
Okay, since we're talking A R P money now, because we see how important this A R P money is, if we look at how the A R P money is being used, let, let's take a look at the fire department for just a minute. So on the fire department's side, we've got seventy-four thousand dollars for bunker gear. We've got a hundred thousand dol, a hundred thousand dollars plus for radios.
That's their wish list. The seventy-four thousand has already been spent correctly, correct? I mean, it's ordered it.
Already ordered the bunker gear as far as I know.
Right.
When they'll, when it'll come, who knows?
Yeah, we don't have, we have not paid it yet, but we.
So the bill, we could still decide where that money would come from to bill, to pay that bill. True?
We could, yeah.
Okay, so then the radios, that's a wish list item?
That's a wish list item.
And everything else, you've got the EMS billing, community center, which are small numbers, premium pay. So as I look at this, as I see how tight our general budget is, and I see how important this A R P money is to be able to just function in this township, and I look at the fire budget, fire account that has a million dollars in it, why wouldn't we think about moving some of these costs over to the fire budget?
That's related to the fire department. We can't move, we can't pave a road out of the fire department.
That's right, yeah, yeah. So if you want to stay, I'm all for doing the roads, no que, you know.
I think he means like the bunker gear and stuff.
Right, I understand, I understand. But I'd like to have Galloway, Chief Galloway here for that discussion, just to make sure that we're, you know, he doesn't think, because he's out of town, we're undermining you, but. Another one's dead. I gotta change these batteries.
So then if, if we can't have that discussion until the chief comes, I mean, I think, I think that, that discussion pretty much is, is a, is a board decision. I don't know how far the discussion would have to go.
We can definitely, I mean, like you said, it has not been spent as of yet. We can definitely, you know, address that. I mean, it's not like, that'd be seventy-five, seven?
Seventy-four, one?
Approximately seventy-five thousand that we could put back into the A R P. When we, when we did that, we were, the, the roads were off the table. They were not part of the, within the scope of the A R P funding. And then they opened it up and we were able to include roads and culverts and things like that. And if you go back to the CARES Act money, almost all of that went to the fire department for, you know, things that they needed. So that was before your time, but it was because we couldn't spend it on anything else.
Right, right.
It was pretty tight, so. I mean, it's definitely an option, we can definitely.
So we've gone, we've gone down the road to establish a park board and a park walking trail and those kind of things. And we still have money to do that. If you take, if you take the quarter of a million dollars out of the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we still have money to do that. But what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that if, if we, if we've promised to do that to the town, for the town, deliver that to the township, and then we have to reneg on that promise, I'd hate to see that, having to back away, because this is, as we've talked about, this is our only chance to really do an improvement for the community. Now, the roads, I, I'm really aware of the road situation as well. So that's where we're going to have to weigh, can we, can we fence off the money to complete our park system and still do the roads? And the question is, can we, can we allocate the hundred and fifty thousand dollars and set that aside so we don't get infringed on that money? Well, I mean, we always can take it back, but I'm just thinking, if we have it set aside, it's a, it's a mental barrier that says, well, that money is, is trying to be used for something for the township. We can always take, if there's an emergency, we can always take it back. But we have to make, we have to be clear about where, where that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to be, going to be allocated.
Well, we don't have it in the general fund, so it would have to come out of the A R P fund.
Right, right, absolutely.
I think your resolution, that, what was it, zero twenty-two dash twenty twenty-two, pretty much said that.
Didn't have the, didn't have the amount.
We didn't have the amount, but it said that we would allocate the funds to the park board and in the event that we got into a road that needed repaving or something like that, you would rescind it, but we could, I mean, we really can't put, everything, your accounting, Tina, is, everything is in A R P fund, that fund number right now, right?
All the A R P money has to be?
Is in there.
In there, and the money has to be paid from there?
Right.
Or like I did, take care of the EMS billing refund and the community center refund. I finally.
So that's the only thing that's been spent?
Said, this is what I want to do, I don't know if it's right or not, but tell me how to do it.
So the, the community center, the EMS billing and the premium pay of all, that's, that's, that is all that's been spent?
Well, the bill to the, those attorneys.
And the attorney, the attorney.
Twenty-three hundred.
Right, but those are all small amounts.
Right, we haven't spent the lean-to shelter, the money, I put that in contingencies and not on a line item, because I personally have requested by email of that gentleman a ten ninety-nine, which has never been received.
Okay.
So until we get that.
So that hasn't been spent?
He's not doing it.
And the bunker gear may, has been, may have been ordered, prob, I think it has been ordered.
It was ordered and it is on a line item.
But it has not been built, it has not been paid?
It has not been spent, no.
All right. So if we take the four hundred and ninety-four thousand that we have after the next deposit, the second portion of the A R P funds, the four hundred and ninety-four thousand, we take a hundred and fifty out for the park, that leaves us three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. And that is, still has the bunker gear and all the, all the things that we have allocated for, may, may have not paid.
And also, you can think about too, I have not sent a fund transfer to Mike Stein yet on the EMS billing or the community center. If you wanted to pull that money back and me cancel them, I can do that.
We, we can, I mean, all it is is just, it's just paying ourselves, so I.
Right.
If, if, if I were, and the EMS or the community centers, like fifty-five hundred?
Right.
Dollars.
And the other room is sixty-seven.
I would be, I'd say, yeah, I'd rather give that to the park or to a road than.
So do you want me to?
Reimburse ourselves and just beef up our general fund, because that's all we're doing.
Exactly.
I'd pull that out.
So you want me to, to cancel those transfers and put them back in?
I'm speaking for the community center.
Twenty-two, seventy-three?
The EMS billing was sixty-seven hundred, I mean, that's, again, it's going into their fund.
The sixty-seven hundred dollars for, to give back to them isn't really going to help them.
Right, it's kind of a, it's a, it's a very small amount. If it was sixty thousand, I could say, yeah, it'd be a big deal, but.
Right.
And I think at that point, when we, when we did all that, we were just looking at ways to use the money up.
And, and you're right.
Because, because we, at that point, our hands were tied. We couldn't, we didn't, we didn't, couldn't do roads, we couldn't do culverts.
Exactly.
So we were just looking at things that the lawyer said that, yes, this is, this isn't approved.
So do you, do you want that money, that, those transferred, do you want me to cancel them and let them go back into two-two-seven-three, or?
I'm, I'm good with the community center, I mean, you guys, are you?
What is, what are we spending the money for the community center? What is that going to do?
It just goes into the.
It goes back into the general fund. It goes back into the general fund.
Yeah, it's, it's just, it's, yeah.
All we're doing is we're paying ourselves back, but again, we were looking at ways to spend the money.
Got it, got it.
Right.
I'm fine with taking that, putting that back.
Okay.
So, what about the EMS billing? I mean, it's a small amount, like she said, it's not going to make or break them.
It's not, it really, because that EMS account that it went into runs out of money every year. That's why I've gave everybody in the system that gets paid over there two options of which fund to pull their pay out of. Instead of going in there and redoing everybody, you choose which fund to pay them out of now. And they always have to do that every, that, that six grand with them getting the raise and everything isn't really going to help that fund at all.
Okay, so we're, we're potentially avoiding the, a radio cost if we decide, if the, if the board decides to fund the radios.
Out of the fire fund.
We will determine where that money will come from, and then this, and then the bunker gear, we will determine where that money will come from. It's not a given that it's coming off the ARP fund at this point. So, money, the money looks right. My only question would be back to Rob, is do we have any other, do we have any other culvert, any other work that might be coming up that would be on our general budget or the Road and Bridges Fund to take care of?
Well, a lot of the, the bad culverts that, that we have determined in the last two years, we have got all those already money allocated for them, and resolutions passed to the engineer's office for two on Morgan Ross, or, not Morgan Ross, two on, on the North Wind Road that are both replacements, and the county engineer's office is doing it, and those are scheduled for August of this year to be done. And then we've got one on the dead end of Chapel that's scheduled for the end of this month, April, to be done, and then all the other ones that were bad ones, they poured concrete in the bottom at a, at a huge savings to us from what they originally said. So, a lot of that's been, the only thing that, that I have is, I have one small one to do on Race Lane Road that I need to do the first of May here, which, we'll do that in-house, that's about four thousand dollars. That's the only one that hasn't had money allocated for, and then there's a, a couple other small ones that are about the same amount, but, I mean, I can hold off on them because none of those roads that are needing culverts replaced are going to be paved this year. The only one that I have to do that we don't have money allocated for is on Race Lane, is just a small one, and I just-
Where is that?
Almost to the county line, but like two culverts back from the county line.
Going south to Hamilton County?
Yes.
Before Howard's Road?
Right.
So, we need to get that done if we're going to repave that road.
That's why I say the first of May, I, I need to, to do that one, get it knocked out, and that, that, that would be one, the two-day closure, just dig it out one day, put it in, let the asphalt, or the flowable fill set up, and black top it the next day, so.
So, how much is, are, are we going to have to spend on the dead end of Chapel? And we got to, we got to, we, we, we're kind of on the hook for the fence, right?
Right, and I'm, and I'm, I'm not for sure how much that's going to be, and I'm thinking that we can rebuild the fence back ourselves.
Okay.
Because it's maybe a hundred-and-twenty feet, and we're going to try to salvage the old fence that's there, because we're going to go take it down, that way we can put it all back up, so we don't have to buy any material, excuse me, uh, the, maybe a couple posts is all we'd have to buy.
Any other expenditures other than that?
Not that I'm thinking of, Rob. I mean, we got our normal, we, dura patching and some other black topping stuff.
No, I meant on, on the dead end of Chapel?
No.
Okay, that, for that culvert replacement, so-
Because I've already bought the stone for the, the temporary road, we've already built the road, it's around it, I just haven't put the gravel on it yet, because I was waiting until they actually needed it before I put that gravel down, but I've already got the gravel bought for it, it's back there, ready to go, so.
So, no, no hidden, and we, now that we got a crew of four, we can build the fence and that'll help offset any, going to a contractor to put it back, okay?
Because a contractor probably charges two-thousand, twenty-five-hundred to build that back, so I'm hoping that, like I said, do that all ourselves, so.
Okay.
And then, for your, the, the cars per day, twenty-seventeen was the last time they, they did a, a count, traffic count for rate, any of thing in Morgan Township. So, twenty-nineteen, they should have done it, but there's no numbers for it, so it was nine-hundred-and-thirty cars a day on Race Lane.
Nine-hundred-and-thirty?
Nine-hundred-and-thirty from Race Lane, or from Alert New London to Howard on Race Lane.
All right.
And from seven-forty-eight south to, uh-
Morgan Ross?
Uh, Morgan Ross, from seven-forty-eight south to Hamilton New London was five-hundred-and-twenty a day, and then the piece from seven-forty-eight, or Leahy, to seven-forty-eight was three-hundred-and-ten cars per day.
What was that, what was that?
Three-ten.
Who was it, what bird?
Morgan Ross between Leahy and seven-forty-eight.
So, you add those two together, right?
Not necessarily, they could be the same, some of those could be the same car.
Could be the same car.
Yeah, that could.
Yeah, some of them could be the same car, and some of them could be, they go across Morgan Ross and turn south and go down seven-forty-eight, so they may not have went on across, uh, to the southern part of Morgan Ross, so. So, the, the center part from seven-forty-eight to Leahy was three-hundred-and-ten cars, and then from seven-forty-eight to, to New London was five-twenty, so Race Lane is definitely-
Even if you add them together, Morgan Ross together, you're still not what the daily vehicle count is on Race Lane.
Right.
So. And then, where do we stand on the nature's work? Do we have anybody to write that grant?
Not yet.
Okay, we got to what, June first?
Yeah, we've got some other options, though, so even, but here's, the only thing I, I would have to say is, do you guys want to go take a quick look at Morgan Ross, take a look at Race Lane, put our eyes on it and step on it and actually see what we're talking about?
Can.
Okay, are you good for that, Darryl?
Yet, today?
Right now?
Yeah.
Because we got to make a decision.
You're going to have to.
You got your truck out there?
All right.
Uh, I'm leaving. No, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking that they might have, they took the five-fifty, so I don't have the five-fifty here to go do that, but I know a vehicle we could take.
The dump truck?
Mm-hmm.
What? The fire, what?
The, the new truck for the fire department's over there.
Oh, did they bring it today? I thought they were bringing it tomorrow.
We'll go get it.
Hey, I know it's insured.
It's sitting over there.
Did you say you, you got to leave?
Yeah, well, yeah, after this was over, I was leaving.
Can you wait for, can you wait, give us another hour?
No, no, I've been here since seven-thirty this morning, no, but you record what you need to record, because I'm going to do these minutes.
It'll be on, it'll be on V, it'll be on V.
Will be on, um-
The SD card.
I don't, I have nothing to put that in.
Okay, I'll write down what we talk about.
I can watch YouTube.
Okay.
Because I do that to make sure all my numbers are correct. I will watch YouTube and do them-
All right, now, I did not-
Monday, because I'm not here tomorrow.
I did not stream this live on YouTube, so I have to take the SD card and put it on to YouTube, which is not a big deal.
Okay, well, I, if I have to do it over the weekend, I will.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so can I have a motion to temporarily adjourn to go do a field trip to view Morgan Ross and Race Lane?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the emergency meeting to take a trip to observe Morgan Ross and Race Lane Road.
Second.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Huff?
Yeah.
Mr. Brucker?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We are adjourned temporarily.
I'm sorry, I'm obviously going to be quick then.
I did too.
But you also remember too, that you guys have a res-
It's my next stop.
All right, I'll make a motion to go back into session for our emergency meet, meeting for planning on road paving at one forty-five PM.
Hold on a second.
Roll call, Mr. Brucker, yes, Mr. Huff, Mr., um-
Yes.
Colb?
Yes.
All right, go ahead and I'm going to try to catch these notes here for- All right, so we went out on the road, toured both roads, your thoughts?
One thing that I, that, that I found out there, that I didn't know before was, Morgan Ross is going, is a, is going to receive a repavement on the Ross side of the road next year.
Possibly, yeah.
Possibly next year, and we, we're thinking about doing ours this year, which we've, we, I think we agree the road is, is ready for that, but if we, if we do it, and if we do that road in two different years, I think what it does to the look of the job, number one, and two, that means that we would have detours on that road in two different years.
It, it, it might not be, you know, you consider the fact of doing it when Ross does it.
All right, um, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I should, I agree with Jeff there, for one thing, I know it'd definitely save money, and I forgot about, like you said, the roads would be closed for two years straight, and that's, that's a burden on, on, and we're not guaranteed that Ross will do it, but I'm sure if they consider it the way we consider it, saving money and time, it'll, I think they'll, if they're thinking about doing it, I think they probably will, we got a better shot of them doing it next year, and we know they're not going to do it this year. And I know that they're, have a trustee change, but, and I don't know how the other trustees, I just found out about it today too, but I sort of agree, I think we are, you know, ought to wait on Morgan Ross till next year and possibly do a combined effort with Ross Township.
Okay.
My opinion.
All right, makes sense to me. Um, Morgan Ross is a tenth of a mile less than Race Lane, and it has, don't have an actual count on the whole stretch because they broke it up, because it's got a crossroad between it, five-hundred-and-twenty cars a day from twenty-nine-hundred Morgan Ross Road to seven-forty-eight, and three-hundred-and-ten from seven-forty-eight to Leahy. And, like I said, Race Lane is a tenth of a mile longer, and it has nine-hundred-and-thirty cars per day, so it actually gets used more, no matter how you look at it, than Morgan Ross. Morgan Ross, to me, seemed like it was in worse shape, seemed like there was a lot more rough areas, but then again, if you look at the estimate, it shows that they're, they're planning to do a lot more pavement repair on Race Lane than they were on Morgan Ross, so maybe driving over it, we didn't see what they saw that needs to be repaired. Rob, your thoughts? I should have gave you the other mic, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I guess my thought is, is I'd like to see us just stick with Race Lane, and hopefully by, if Ross Township, I just tried to call Paul Bullock to see what their, try to get a more, better idea what their plans are for their part of Morgan Ross, but if we could do it the same time as them, hopefully we'd get a better price.
Because they're already staged there and-
Right, that would hopefully make it, hopefully make it better, and then that way also, we're doing everything the same year that they're doing it, so it makes, makes it look better for both, that way, if we go and do it this year, it makes their, their side look like crap, and, and the next year when they go and do it, then theirs looks new and ours is old, where it all looked the same the whole time, so that's what, what, that would be my suggestion.
I think that's everybody's suggestion is wait.
And then, maybe too, we could use our own crews, since I've got four guys this summer, maybe we could do some of the pavement repair on it ourselves, and maybe cut down on what, what they have to do and save us some money that way.
Yeah, maybe you can talk to the county and see what they were going to do, and maybe that's some of the stuff you can do.
Right, well, just some of the obvious stuff, and, and if we went in and did a lot of that ourselves, maybe that would cut down on some of it, that might help us a little bit, if we could do some of that ourselves later this summer.
But if you ask them, Rob, and they pointed out to you, this is what we were going to do, and then we do it, then, like I say, then we'll be sure, get the credit for it.
Right.
Yeah.
And in Race Lane, if we do decide to go that route, you'll get that culvert toward the county line?
Yes, I should have showed you that when we was down there, but it was like, just a little over a tenth of a mile north of the county line is where it's at.
So, between the Howard and Pretty Mary?
Well, if, if, remember that pond right there at the end of, uh, it's just north of that pond, about a hundred feet?
Okay.
That pond there at the intersection of Howard and Race Lane?
Right.
There's that pond there, and then just about a hundred feet north of that is where that culvert is.
Okay.
Is it coming downhill? Is that-
No, it's on a flat stretch there.
Flat structure?
It's just an eighteen-inch culvert, so, like I said, a day and a half, we can have it replaced and be ready to go, so.
Do you, do you have to close the whole road down?
Yeah, we'll have to close it, it'll be closed for, I, I'm going to say three days, but we'll have it done in a day and a half.
Yeah.
Because I'll come in, I'll, I can get it dug out in the morning, and we could almost do it in a day, but we don't have, we can't do it in a, an hour day, we'd have to work a ten-hour day, or maybe a twelve-hour day to get it done, but, so that's why I was, I say a day and a half, we'll get it dug out, put the new one in, get it set, we'll pour, pour the flowable fill, let that set overnight, and then black top it the next morning, so, and then have it open, and then they'll be ready for pavement, so.
If we didn't black top that, would you still replace that culvert?
Yes, I would still replace that culvert.
Okay.
That culvert replacement wasn't in their price, was it?
No.
That was never on, never mentioned?
No.
Okay.
And, and I'm, I'm saying about four thousand dollars, but it, it might be cheaper than that, I'm just giving you a little bit higher estimate just to make sure we're covered, but-
Okay.
Because it's only an eighteen-inch pipe, and, and I'm going to go with black plastic, I'm not going to go with metal, because I, I've been trying to get away from metal, because there's pipes that I put in when I started here thirty years ago that are already rusted out, so that's why I've been trying to go with all plastic, and that's what the county's been trying to do with the double-walled, black plastic pipes, so.
How long, how long have you been doing them?
The, the plastic pipe? For the last ten years.
Ten years, and you, have you checked through any of them? And of course, I probably know where, right?
Although, there's no, no, no issues with any of the plastic ones.
The only thing you could do with break or something.
The only thing that, that has happened with some of the plastic ones is maybe someone hit them with a lawnmower on the inlet or outlet side, just, and just chewed the top of it up a little bit, but-
Okay.
Not hurting, huh?
But not really hurt the integrity of the pipe at all, so.
And, and how long did the, did the metal ones last, probably fifteen years maybe?
There were some metal ones that just barely lasted twenty years, and I had to replace, I replaced ones that I put in thirty years ago, lasted about twenty years, and I had to replace them and put plastic ones in.
Yeah. They also give more than the plastic, right?
I'm about to say, as long as you have at least eight to ten inches of cover over them, usually pretty good, I mean, they want twelve, but as long as we have at least eight to ten, we're, we're good, so.
All right, so, what's, what do we want to tell the county?
If, if we, if we do Race Lane this year, where does it, I don't see the money to do Morgan Ross next year. Where will the money from, come from Morgan Ross to do that?
The whole road project, there won't be enough money, you don't think, in, in all the roads?
But that, that's the, that's kind of the situation that we're at right now, is based-
Here, here's an, an idea that we could do, is instead of doing that whole section of Morgan Ross next year, maybe just do a- Here, here's an, an idea that we could do, is instead of doing that whole section of Morgan Ross next year, maybe just do in between Leahy and seven forty-eight.
That's an idea.
Cause that's pretty boogered up, but it's also a short section. If we did that and then maybe the following year, hopefully we'd come up with some other funds or something to, to do the, the southern part of Morgan Ross. I don't know how much that's gonna save us, but.
The only, the thing about Morgan Ross is the low volume of traffic. That's go, that works in our favor to,
Right.
prioritize that. Even though it's a bad road, to prioritize it with not the urgency of a high traveled road.
But wouldn't it, wouldn't it be better to do from the bottom of the hill to seven forty-eight, do that section, uh, because it's gonna be more. That's what he said. More traffic, no, oh.
Well, yeah, that.
He said seven forty-eight.
I, I said to, to do the, the, the center section, that's only three hundred and ten cars per day. You know, and Darrell's saying do the southern section, it's five hundred and twenty cars a day.
Right, and that'd be the continuation of Ross if they do it.
Right.
Now, next year, if Ross doesn't do it, then we can do the center section and wait till the, the year that Ross does theirs and then try to budget for it.
Right, that, that's kind of what I was thinking with, between Leahy and seven forty-eight. If we did that, that way it wouldn't make Ross look bad and.
Right.
And we'd do it the same, maybe that would help us, even help us out.
Yeah.
Ju- just an idea, throw, kicking some stuff around.
And we might save enough money doing it by doing it that way to be able to do them both. Who, I, I mean, don't really know. And like I said, too, who knows, uh, petroleum prices may go down, you know, and.
They may, but I, I've been asking a, a lot of different contractors and different people with the county and with ODOT. And they, they said it, it would take a couple of years for prices to come down. Once they went up where they are.
That's what I was gonna say, once they get it up, they.
That's gonna be a hard, hard thing to get them to come down.
Right.
I mean, it has come down because a prime example is for six years, we tried getting Leahy Road paved from Northwind Road to Chapel. And when we first started, it was a hundred and thirty thousand and then when we finally got that paved last year, it was only eighty-six thousand to do the same road, but.
That's unbelievable.
It took six years for that to go around, but then.
It went back up real quick.
It went, jumped back up. I mean, if that same road, we'd be back up probably a hundred and sixty thousand to do it now, so.
Well, way I look at it is, we committed back in February, we, we, like Tina reminded us, we had a resolution that we were gonna spend two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to repave Race Lane. So if the price would have came in at two twenty, we were, we would, we would have done that road. We, we already approved that. So that's, in essence, we're actually going, asking for, to approve another forty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. We were already spending two hundred and twenty thousand. It's the way I look at it. So we're, yes, it's over, but it's not like we're. If you don't get it done. We already budgeted two hundred and twenty thousand and, and then in the meantime, there may be some grants that we may be able to look at.
True.
For Morgan Ross. There may be another ODOT grant come out and maybe if we have a, a grant writer that we are comparable with, maybe we can, not that we didn't put in a good, but we learned a lot. You even said yourself, you learned, you learned what they, they're looking for. And maybe we'll be more successful. So we'll just have to tighten things up and try to budget for it and hope that we get a grant and do everything we can to. And the same with the park board, if we can get, or the park, if we can get grants for that, that could help alleviate a little bit of money too, but we'll, we'll just stay, that's earmarked for the park and anything we get is gravy. You know, we go, we go toward helping us out on roads. Good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we approve, um, pavement of Race Lane from Alert in London to Howard Road for a total of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Um, I'll second it.
Mr. Brucker, yes. Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Colb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Alright, uh, do we just have to send, I'll have to get a resolution number and send that to, I'll have to call Tina and get a resolution number.
Correct.
Alright. We approved the two sixty-six or two forty-six, what was it? Two eighty, two sixty-six. We already, we had, the two hundred and twenty is out the window because it came in over budget or over bid.
Okay.
Who's the contractor on this, Rob?
John R. Jurgerson.
On Race Lane?
Yes. John R. Jurgerson giving us price on both Race Lane and Morgan Ross.
Okay.
So it'd be the same contractor either way.
Alright, anything else? I'll get a resolution number for that and do you wanna let Eric know or do you want me to?
I'm emailing him right now that you guys just made, Matt made a resolution, but you don't have a number yet.
I'll get the, yeah, I'll get that, I'll call Tina.
I do have one other thing before we go. Um, based on, based on the paving on Race Lane Road, what I'd like to take a very hard look at is, again, to readdress the fire department spending.
Okay.
About what we've spent A R P money for in the, for the fire department. And resolve that, that unless there's something that's super critical or there's a, there's a, a definite need for A R P money to be spent for the fire department, that it not be spent for the fire department, that it comes out of the fire department budget.
I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes. And maybe we can take that up at the next.
Just be, it'd be the second set of bunker gear, the multipurpose lean tube and the EMS building.
Well, I, I, I think the, I think the fire truck has already been paid for.
But it hasn't been out of A R P money.
Oh, they paid for that out of their, their, okay, fire fund?
Did not come out of the. This was potential. This was, this is what we have spent or allocated. So it's the bunker gear, multipurpose lean tube and EMS building. I already told her to take the community center off. Premium pay, we've already paid and we've paid the attorney. So those two are committed.
This is committed?
So we got about twenty-seven thousand dollars out.
Okay, so then this is?
So that hundred and eighty-eight, eight hundred, basically we got the three hundred and six thousand, um, that we got, plus the twelve hundred, so say three hundred and eight thousand dollars.
What about the, is, what is this then? Is that?
That's potential, potential projects.
The vehicle in production though?
That, that, that. No, no, it's the new battalion.
That, is that, that's not the truck we were just riding in?
Yes. But that is, that was slated to come out of the fire fund.
Okay.
But it was, but a potential project for this.
Gotcha.
The new radius was a potential, second round premium pay was a potential, and replacement for Chief Griffith's vehicle was a potential. Potential for the road department was replacement pipe, or culvert replacement and road paving. We had two hundred and fifty-three thousand estimated, um, for road paving and we went to two sixty-six.
Pretty close, yeah.
Yeah. And then walking trails, one fifty. So this is all we have actually spent to date. Twenty-four, five seventy-seven point seventy-five plus twenty-three oh three minus, let's just say six hundred and twelve thousand, just for, so we got five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we have not spent. Now, we just spent two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Out of the, and then deduct that, take two sixty-six and you got about three twenty.
Plus.
Left three hundred and twenty thousand.
Two sixty-six, three eighty. About three hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Okay.
We have left. So. Hey, Rob?
Yes.
Did you say the county said that there's some, some townships pulling their bids completely?
Yes. I don't know which ones.
That still gives us a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. I asked Nikki, I said, how come? It's left. I would think that if people pulled their bids.
We still might have a block.
The price would go down because.
Still a possibility out there.
Yeah, you, you, you need less people and you need, uh, and you need to work. And he goes, uh, why would I need to work? We, there's only two of us anyway. Sounds like a, uh.
It's, it's a monopoly because.
Yeah, monopoly, yeah.
Right now, they've got enough work for five years to keep all their crews busy just with ODOT. Just with ODOT work. And, and that's per a, an ODOT inspector that I, that I spoke with and, you know, ODOT's got enough work for five years to keep John R. Jurgerson and Bear Paving busy just doing that.
Both of them, both of them got that much.
Cause like there was stuff.
Why do they have to?
There was stuff last year that ODOT didn't get to because of weather and stuff that kept them from completing the work. Weather issues and time of year and all that sort of stuff, so.
Are they backlog?
Yeah, they're backlog. They're, they're backlog five years right now.
So how, how are they gonna do that? It's stuff that they bid four years ago at.
Because.
They gonna honor that, they gonna honor that price?
This year, they just, they did dedicate one crew just to doing this, where they've got three or four crews doing ODOT stuff. But if they, if we was not to do all this, they'd pull that crew to start working on their backlog.
It's not like they're hurting. Well, that's why he, he told me that, uh, they've always had six crews all time, full time. And pickup crews every, every once in a while. But he said this year, they've only got four. So they, so manpower is, is their problem too, not just.
Well, you're right.
Material.
It's, it's not just material, but it's manpower and labor and the other thing is trucks to haul the asphalt to them. That was one of the things that, like, there was a, a contract on I seventy-five to just do pavement repair. It was thirteen miles of pavement repair on I seventy-five between two seventy-five and Route sixty-three. And they didn't get that done because they couldn't get the trucks, like they could only get six or seven trucks a night to do it and they was calling for twenty-five trucks.
Wow.
So that's some of the issues they was running into and, you know, if these, and a lot of these trucking companies, they have a driver in the truck during the day. Then they have another driver that drives at night, but they couldn't get drivers to drive at night for them.
Yeah.
When would they be looking at doing Race Lane Road?
I, I, I wouldn't know until they do the actual pre-construc meeting, which I think is, well, they haven't even awarded a contract yet, so they haven't given, given a date on it.
You could be, you could be six months out.
Well, they, they, I do know the contract says it has to be done by November this year, so we're hoping that they get to us first and other places are towards the end of the year, cause I, I, the, the blacktop holds up a lot better when you do it earlier in the year versus in November. But they, they can go all the way up till December first. They, they, but it's gotta be done this calendar year, where they can get some fines. That, that's how our contracts are.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
Nope.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Huff?
Yes.
Mr. Colb?
Yes.
Mr. Brucker?
Yes.
We are adjourned at two oh nine.